Zoom and then Haley Littleton will send it to me on my iPad and I'll ask it to the council or this is not going to be the time for a bunch of general stuff that was this morning we answered a ton of questions during the coffee talk. But we will probably answer a few and if you send them you will get at least a typed answer. We are two minutes until the gavel drops so Jeffrey you got two minutes.
For what?
You look a little fuzzy maybe you need to clean your your lens off a little bit you're a little blurry.
Hang on.
How can we have a picture of Haley and not Haley herself?
Because she's Much better. I don't know she doesn't want to be seen I guess you look good Brian.
You're kind of backlit Brian can you close shut that light?
Hey Brian you unmute yourself do a mic check.
Sibilance sibilance mic check.
It's the accountant.
That's right I'm sure yeah I was trying to get the gun show in there I've been thrashing arms all winter man.
Yeah 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 sun's out guns out.
That's right buddy. So you guys know there are thirty seven people watching already so careful.
Okay.
Jeffrey.
Oh I don't know why everyone Aaron's the one that we have to watch out for she's a loose cannon.
Definitely the words I would have used drunken drunken sailor. Spending money like drunken pirate what was it Gary?
Sailor on shore leave.
Shannon Smith would you check make sure your mics working?
Um hello?
Yep good alright.
Okay.
Hi. Okay everybody ready it is four o'clock we'll call this meeting I'm gonna call this meeting to order of the Thursday March twenty six twenty twenty four PM virtual town of Breckenridge council meeting roll call. Let's do a roll call.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay Mr Gallagher.
Here.
Mr Carlton.
Here.
Mr Bergeron.
Here.
Ms Owens.
Here.
Ms Wolf.
Here.
Ms Jello.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
Here we're gonna begin approval of gender rec everything. No changes. No changes alright we have three items and Rick's gonna kick it off with COVID nineteen.
Really the only thing to update you there was one additional positive test that came out in the county today so I think we're up to a total of eleven. To my knowledge none of those are hospitalized the biggest obviously the biggest news and what everybody's dealing with is the you know the stay at home order from the governor which went out yesterday to take effect this morning along with the the most recent revised order through the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. We've been fielding a lot of questions internally from people within the community wondering what they can do what they can't do etcetera. A lot of the things that are either allowed or prohibited in the order we've kind of been following with some exceptions and some of those just there were some retail I would consider non essential non critical retail businesses that were trying to do kind of a curbside pickup deliveries type system and that's not gonna work anymore and you know I think there's even things we were doing as local government that we probably would not consider a critical service that needs to be done right now like removing snow from the greens at the golf course and so we halted that operation today and but mostly minor things and we're all working through you know kind of the interpretation of that order and what it means but we don't foresee a whole lot of changes in Summit County relative to that there is the interpretation and he the governor specifically calls out construction and so it's the feeling of all of everybody that's looked at this that construction can continue to occur there's some recommendations on trying to create a safer environment but we are going to continue to follow the lead of Summit County government and we're working to try to ramp up our construction inspection services next week so more more to come on that but that is something we're gonna continue to look forward with so you still will see construction occurring within the county any questions from anybody relatives to the order that came out?
Did you guys hear anything about the Forest Service is either looking at or has already determined to close Forest Service trailheads?
I have not heard that no I was on a conference call yesterday Jeffrey with I think it was yesterday with Bill Jackson and other seed outs talking about closing some restrooms on the highway but Bill didn't say anything about closing any trailheads.
Yeah I think that just happened just recently I'll see if I can look into that but someone just texted me that that maybe that Dan Gibbs made some announcement or something but well I'm sure we can figure it out before this is over.
I can when we're done I can reach out to Dan too and ask him.
Well the order specifically allows people to still get outdoors and hike and even recognize a ski and Nordic ski and that so one of the things we are looking at countywide and it came up this morning is trying to get their recreation paths paid
Pass.
Paths cleared throughout the county as you know we've had less we don't have any public transportation system in the county anymore more people are walking the weather's been good and they're walking in roadways because their the rec pass throughout the county are not cleared we've cleared the one in Brack going out the four mile bridge and we've made an offer to go a little farther if we can help the county out and they're following up on that today so hopefully we'll see some more of the rec pads around the county getting cleared in the next couple days. That's all I have if you don't have any more questions on any of that. The next thing we wanted to get into was the financial update and before I kind of turn this over to Brian and Shannon I wanna just kind of set the stage a little bit. First of all I'm really happy with the work that's been done in an extremely short amount of time by staff and also Brian and Shannon this is not etched in stone at this time. I can tell you that in talking with Brian yesterday it makes him nervous to have to move at this fastest fastest speed and you know hope we don't leave a zero out somewhere when we're trying to move all this stuff around we feel pretty good there'll be I mean there's gonna be some little things you know ten thousand that might need to go back in or ten thousand more that could come out but this gives you a really good ballpark of where I think that we can be with this and there's certainly that we are not looking I got ahead of myself because we're gonna do break relief first and then we're gonna go into the budget but when we do get to the budget we're not looking for any you know official action from the council at this time we're more making sure that we're on the right track and and getting to where we need to be but I apologize because we're not going to the budget right now we're gonna start with the brick relief program that we've been working on and you should have all got an email yesterday Wendy which laid out some recommended criteria for the business relief program. I will tell you that I'm hearing from Frisco and Silverthorne right now and they're looking to implement a business relief program also so dependent upon the decisions that we make here today they want to communicate the most just to get an idea of what we're looking at so Wendy you wanna take it over here?
Yeah I'll kick it off because I know we have people listening in so I'll give a just a little bit of an overview again and then I think it would be good to kind of go through carefully the criteria and then and then council you see the questions that we're looking for but you're welcome to bring up any points you've seen on the criteria let's discuss it let's refine it let's keep moving. I you know this is this has been a great challenging project but so much needed from what we are hearing from the community and I've had the pleasure of working with Gary Gary and I've worked on committees before so we know how to do this well we didn't know how to do this one but we know how to work together somewhat and we one of the things that the council asks is that we get input from business people that are that are that really live this day in and day out and so we reached out and Ken Nelson from restaurants Jeff Boyd from retail and Toby Babich from the lodging community joined us and gave us some direction and we're very grateful to them and glad that we did that because a few of the initial ideas that that certainly Gary and I had going into this were immediately kind of tweaked by these gentlemen that kind of said listen you know I think really what people need the most help with in the business community in the small business community is is a grant for rent rent is on their minds it's keeping them up at night and if some of these small businesses are to make it through they're gonna need some assistance with rent and so we've spent the last six days really working very hard on what can be a simple straightforward program that achieves that goal. So we challenged ourselves again to do this quickly but to do it with purpose and and we're what we've come up with is some immediate excuse me some immediate rent rent support for the towns smaller entrepreneurial businesses it's intended not to get us perhaps through to opening but at least bridge the gap in the immediate I mean we're coming up on April I think a lot of our small businesses are gonna be needing to work it out with their landlords within the next few days and so this what can at least provide a bridge grant allowing the businesses to get through the next thirty days until they can pursue some other relief options we keep hearing of some other relief options coming down the pipeline. They may or may not be programs that will help our small businesses but we do hope that our small businesses leave no stone unturned as to what they're gonna look for to help them through this this crises so so we came up with six criteria points and and this is where I believe that you know the council needs to really roll up their sleeves here in the next however many minutes we need to discuss this and make sure that we're we're thinking it through. The first in order to qualify for the relief grant that we're considering here the small business must number one currently be closed by Summit County order and be unable to operate the business from home. So we decided that that should not you know if there's limited takeout going on like some of our restaurants are currently doing or limited mail order through websites that some of our smaller retailers do and we're doing before this this happened that would not preclude them from being able to qualify for this grant so that's the first one number two have a physical location in the town of Breckenridge with a monthly rent payment due to a landlord to whom they have no ownership interest if the tenant has multiple locations only one of the locations will be considered for a grant now we know we have several small businesses that have more than one location in Breckenridge and the reason for just saying that in initially anyway that will help one of them is that we still don't really know how far the million dollars that the town that the town council allocated will go. We've been looking at a list we've been working off the twenty twenty bolt report to try to ascertain how many businesses might qualify but we feel like we have to walk before we run on this program just a little bit so that's that was criteria number two number three the business must be open all year to qualify no seasonal businesses in other words if it's a seasonal business they either haven't opened for the summer season or they were just about to close for the winter season and we feel that we really need to go first to our year round businesses.
Hey Wendy.
Yes.
Can I ask you a question about number two before you go any farther?
Sure.
How are we how are we deciding if the tenant has multiple locations if they have multiple or or different ownership groups for multiple locations what's the what's the threshold for ownership that triggers this?
Well there's gonna be several things we know we know there's a lot of different combinations out there we we have owners that have multiple locations where the owners own some of the real estate and so they have mortgages not not rents then some of them have a combination of both we have some businesses that are the same business in four different locations within our town limits we have others that just have two so so but they in in those instances that I'm thinking of they pay rent to a landlord they don't own the sticks and bricks in which they're located or have a mortgage now we're gonna definitely be discussing and this has come up why are we not helping with mortgages why is this just directed at rents and the reason that we rationalize that we would go to the those that are renting and have a landlord relationship is that that those that have mortgages have the opportunity to go to their banks and look for some restructuring of a loan or some relief there it's not that we don't we realize that everybody's hurting and and it's gonna be tough for everyone but but the landlords and and the tenants are special relationship that we have many of those throughout town and they don't have a lot of options if we don't provide a grant program. Does that answer your question?
Yeah I
Eric I think we're gonna find from time to time there's gonna be some things that don't comfortably fit with all this criteria and I think there's gonna be some ad hoc situations that have no idea what they may be but inevitably with any program that's created there's always outliers or exceptions and we're just gonna have to be able to have the flexibility to sit down and think through it and then ultimately say okay really what's in the best interest of the business owners and so I don't think there's a specific answer right now but what we're really trying to do immediately is exclude a landlord who owns the real estate who also happens to be running the business as as running the business like as a tenant and when both parties are the same we felt that that's appropriate to to exclude that situation.
And even if the parties are partially the same ownership group that is you know different than the ownership group of the business but you know there's I I know that there's gonna be a lot of this stuff that comes up and I'd like to you know sort of flush some of this stuff out so just
I think we can talk about and flush it out but we're not gonna do it on this.
Yeah no no I
This evening.
Just to get everybody thinking the other thing what about a what about a business that has multiple locations that are not located here part of a larger chain that has you know just that you know I can think of a bunch of retail stores that are part of larger or larger organizational you know matrix what's our thought about about that?
Yeah and Gary and I were just talking about that we may need to fine tune the wording on number two because we you can think of a couple of them I'll just one is Starbucks.
Right.
So 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 no I mean Starbucks is a national chain they are running the business they should not qualify in this program for that reason now we have other one or two other businesses where it is a national chain but the owner is a local franchise.
You know maybe we should call it local ownership then.
Yeah.
Maybe there should be some local ownership structure in here at least you know fifty percent local ownership.
Well and I think with this we could be a little bit remember when we did the solar panels and we we had a smaller a smaller region and then we opened it up because we didn't we didn't get them all sold perhaps this is something similar where we we have this first round really focused and then we'll start seeing you know people pop up about you know what about me what about me and and perhaps it makes sense and perhaps it doesn't but I I agree with the process of going a little bit stricter this first time around and then see how many people apply and how many people we we were able to help and then perhaps we can grow the world it's harder to shrink the world than to to grow it if that makes sense.
Yeah you know I was gonna say the same thing I think initially what we have to do is keep it simple and one I applaud the work that Gary and Wendy have done but keep it simple shoot the snake closest to our foot is in regards to offering help as quickly as possible and and I don't know how the rest of you feel but I for one would you know I would love to revisit this down the road and see if if there is some segment of the population we miss but initially I mean what I'm seeing here looks looks really really good and and you guys have done some 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 great work.
Yeah I I agree with Aaron and Jeffrey I you know this allows us to get some money to a large group right away and then we can we can open it up so I agree.
I just want to make sure we don't burn through a million dollars and which we will I mean you will burn through this money quickly we gotta make sure that we were thoughtful and and this is very thoughtful so don't take me wrong that we do hit the the correct group so I think in agreeing with Aaron I think the more restrictive we are immediately the better off we are so.
Well and and we've spent Chris Kulik and I have spent a lot of time on the very list of businesses that's on the bolt report and so I I think you guys would be pleased I you know they the ones that look like they are hitting our criteria are the ones I believe we we were wanting to target here so now will we have some that are shades of gray absolutely yeah so I we have to be prepared to to work with those but you know we're trying to at least get out in front with these businesses that we had really hoped to target.
Very good.
Okay.
You know I'm sorry one more question you know if franchises so locally owned franchises do we know that if they're getting assistance from the the brand itself or the franchise itself?
Well that's that will come up within our landlord relationship see really we're gonna have some variations of what a tenant landlord relationship is in these various businesses.
I'm saying if say and I don't think it is but say Starbucks is locally owned are they getting assistance from Starbucks? You you know how we just said that locally owned we might we might allow locally owned franchise into into our grants program do we know whether that brand is giving assistance to locally owned franchise?
Well if it is locally owned I I would expect those folks to apply and make the case that they're you know that they they're it's a national franchise but what I have here is really a just a usual tenant landlord relationship I have to send them my check with CAMs on a monthly basis and you know they're expecting it due in April they're willing to give me a little bit of a deferment but I mean that's exactly the person we're talking about.
Yeah yeah.
But so so I think we will find that out in the application.
Sure.
Okay you guys ready to keep going?
Yep go ahead.
Okay so the next criteria number four is employ sixteen or fewer FTEs based on the twenty twenty bolt report that's important because obviously if people were to report their employees today they would be one or two or zero so so we're working off of the bolt report that came out the first of the year. Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Okay the next one number five provide evidence of sustainability now this is aimed at seeing that the tenant is not just reliant on the town for some support but is actually going out and working all the waters so I just gave examples some it could be a statement of reserve funds that they keep for a rainy day it could be an application to refinance their business operation with one of the local banks which will give them some cash to apply towards something else. The SBA loans application and you know there's a lot of information coming out just today on SBA loans and then other state and federal relief application programs and of course a lot of those again are in their infant stage but we'd just like to see from that applicant that they are working on something that's gonna keep them going and not just reliant on the town.
So with the statement of reserve funds do we have an idea of how much we're looking for and also this feels like a rainy day right now so could we look at reserve funds from January first to also because people's reserve funds right now might look very different than what they are.
Well Aaron really what we're looking for is we would like to really hear from the tenant that they think they can hang in there until we can get this back up and running and and you know I mean it's not gonna be the best use of town money if we help them for a month we're still not able to open in a month and they have to go bankrupt and you know so you know it you know this won't be easy and 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 this is a this is the most subjective piece point in of criteria.
Yeah.
But we thought it was important to work with these applicants and make sure that you know they're working the waters as best they can I we're not gonna ask for X amount we're not looking for a percentage again we're we're wanting to get this done get the get the money out but the point here is you've got to work all the waters this is you know you're probably gonna need more assistance than just a month to get to opening.
Absolutely Aaron it's critical that we really it's it's critical that we really are more forward thinking and forward looking than backward looking it's one of the reasons we had considered well maybe someone shows us a P and L and we said no that's really backward looking it really is not relevant to a point in time moving forward and I don't you know I don't think we're looking to scrub this like a you know heavy duty underwriting and the way a bank would do it it's just to get a cozy feeling since we're using taxpayers money. Do you think your best judgment is they're likely to be around because at the end of the day I mean this program and the same program we're doing with FERC it's really to keep the businesses poised so that they are ready to open and they have employees to open when those doors are ready to open and that's why as we discussed on Tuesday the FERC program is gonna be a rent program also but it's gonna be employees who work for businesses within the town of Breckenridge regardless of where they may reside. And so that's why we're developing this program it's really all the theme is really rent driven support rent for the employees who work in Breckenridge support and help assist on the rent for businesses that are in the that are in the town of Breckenridge and really that theme really came together I think very nicely for both small businesses as well as employees. And really that theme really came together, I think, very nicely for both small businesses as well as employees. And that's why and that really was the information that we had gotten, as Wendy said earlier, from the three business representatives who actually sat with us and kind of clued us into in terms of what they thought was most important.
Agreed. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And then the, the final point of criteria, number six is demonstrate by letter from the landlord that there will be a rent reduction, deferment, or a combination for at least one month. The landlord must further agree not to evict the tenant for failure to pay rent for at least 60 additional days after receiving the grant from the town. We felt this was, obviously this is very important. Eric's been talking about this, that this is a partnership. We, we, we need and want to help the tenants who are also getting some help and relief from the landlords. This is, this is all hands on deck to do this. And so Eric is willing for, you know, we've had the question, well, what if my landlord just won't do anything, you know? Then Erica said, he'll call that landlord. We'll try to use whatever leverage we have to try to get them to work with us. And so it's really important. But by the same token, you have, I, it's also important to realize that when this is very directed at rents. So just like what FERC does, once an applicant qualifies, then the town will be writing the check to the landlord for that rent. And so I, Gary and I felt that it was really important, the rest of the team brought this up as well, that the landlord agree not to turn around within the next 60 days until that tenant, they're out. So, so, so I think that all sounds pretty straightforward and reasonable. Are you all there?
Wendy, a quick question. So, you know, I mean, obviously the, the best thing to do, the most magnanimous thing to do would be the for the landlord to forgive a portion of the rent. But let's say it's a deferral. They're going to defer a portion of the rent. Are we going to have a say or even an input about whether that deferral is like for two months or over the course of the year? And what I worry about is a, a tenant being kind of desperate and say, okay, fine. I'll, 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 you know, we'll, we'll have the town give you some dough and I will try to make good in two months when that might be unrealistic expectation. So are we going to kind of look at that and say, no, no, a two month deferral, you know, in and above what the town will give you just won't work and it'll be too onerous on the, on the tenant.
Yeah. You know, it's a great, great, Jeffrey, it's a great question. What I'm hearing is that a lot of the landlords are saying we're going to take this on a month by month basis. So, so maybe there's some landlords that are already looking two months out. But, but I would guess that more of them are saying right now, one month at a time. And, and, you know, I, we'll have a few landlords that are maybe more out of town landlords who won't realize that, boy, the timing of this also happened when we were about to head for month season, time when it's always hard to pay rent. And, and so we'll have some of that to deal with. I do think that, that this is, this number six where we need to deal with the tenant and, you know, hopefully we're having the tenant deal with their landlord for the most part because really this should be a negotiation between the tenant and their own landlord. But once that landlord sees that the town is trying to help them do something, trying to help them, you know, that helps the landlord too. Because remember, you know, in a situation that we're in, I, the landlords need to remember that if we're, we're right now and have been at a less than 1% vacancy rate for restaurant and retail in the town of Breckenridge for four years. It's been below 1%. That's why a lot of our lease rates have really gotten up there because it's, you know, it's, there's been no vacancy. But now in this climate, if there suddenly is a vacancy rate that goes to 10% or more on Main Street, guess what happens to the lease rates? They fall. And not only that, that landlord is going to have that space vacant for months before it gets filled. So that's what they're facing if they don't play ball with, with this situation.
Comfortable that the out of state landlords are savvy enough to realize that?
Well, Jeffrey.
I mean, don't forget, these are, you know, everybody knows what's going on right now. This is not a Colorado problem. So, you know, I mean, a landlord has to understand every month of rent that they don't get from a tenant that's gone is money they will never recapture.
Okay.
Every month of rent that they have to defer though, is money that there is the potential for them to recapture. And if they work with their tenant, they have a good potential to recapture that money. But if you kick somebody out and the, and the rental rates, like, like Wendy said, if vacancy rates go to 10%, you could be stuck with your property for eight, 12, 24 months and getting zero rent. So landlords need to really think about this before they're going to start pushing tenants out the door in both commercial and, and residential.
Hey Wendy, would, would it be, maybe make sense to say a reasonable deferment to open the door for us to kind of go, come on landlord, you know, that's, that's, that's not going to work. I mean, you know, it doesn't force us to, but it allows us to, just to add the word reasonable.
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm open to, I, I, I mean, I feel for these tenants. They, I feel that, yeah, they need as much leverage as they can get to go back to their landlord and say that, you know, I mean, this is all a negotiation, but I hope it's a fast negotiation.
Yeah, you bet. Absolutely.
And there, and there, and there will be a bit of moral suasion in all of this as well.
Yeah.
I mean, the criteria isn't like a box where everything gets checked off neatly in the box. I mean, there's going to be some, some of it's a science and some of it's an art form. And when it gets to the art form, it's going to require some conversations. It's going to require some moral suasion. And we're really hoping to be able to kick off that moral suasion through the bully pulpit and having Eric talk to as many landlords as we can. What would really be ideal, and it's probably only ideal, therefore it will never happen, but it really would be nice if we could just kind of come up with a suggestion for the landlords in terms of what would be reasonable and try to get a group of landlords to kind of go along with that.
You know, we, we may also find out what a lot of the landlords are gravitating to.
Exactly.
And, and, you know, that would be a good thing to sit, be able to say, hey, listen, some of our better landlords in town, they're doing X, Y, and Z. And, and we would really like for you all to, you know, fall in line.
And, and we need to have that conversation with some of them to try to, I'll say, create a template.
Yeah.
As best we can. Cause at the end of the day, we want to put these landlords on the wall of honor, not the wall of shame.
Yeah. I think the next step would be to, what, to, to your point, Gary, is that be prepared for when landlords say, well, what, what's the minimal I can do? Like what, what can I do that's acceptable and that sort of thing? But I, I think this is really smart. Wendy, Gary, nice work. I, I, I do. I think it's great to encourage our whole community to come together and help with the situation. I think that's what this does.
Yeah. And I also think we need to have a conversation with a, a cross section of tenants to kind of get from them what they might think. Now, of course, they're going to, they're going to reach, but at least it's another affirmation point in terms of what would they think is reasonable? And they'll, they'll be asking too much. And the landlords will think what they're offering is reasonable will not be enough. And we try to find a range, which we would call the sweet spot. I mean, I think that's, that work still needs to be done. Those conversations need to be had.
And I've been thinking about this a lot, Aaron. And for me, I would say if, if the landlord said, I will defer April, May, and June rent over the next 24 months starting in July, I think that is a legitimate way to go about this.
I think that would be good.
You take those three months and you divide it by 24 and you add that to the monthly rent. So.
That sounds great. Yeah.
Now, some landlords are going to come back and say, minus what they, well, minus what they get from the town, of course. Some landlords will come back and say, but I, I have to be whole on my CAM fee because they may, they may be in a larger building where they're paying CAM to somebody else. I think that's a, that's an okay negotiation with the tenant too, to say, look, you just, you got to cover my CAM for the next three months because the, the ownership group in the building can't afford, a lot of times these associations, they run really lean with, with, you know, with that, that CAM, CAM money. So that, that's something we need to consider also.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what's CAM?
Common area and maintenance, depending, you know, trash, snowplow, you know, et cetera.
Yeah.
Hey Eric, I think that's a great definition of reasonable.
Yeah, that is.
Yeah. Are we, are we worried at all about rents being raised when businesses open or anything like that?
I, I mean, I would assume that most people in this town have a lease and by the time their lease is up, we'll see where we are.
Okay.
And we're, we're not going back to where we were a month ago. By the end of this year, I would not assume.
Yeah. And again, there's probably.
It's going to be a struggle now.
Yeah, there's probably going to be some vacancy. I, I, our vacancy rate, I doubt will remain less than 1%. And so as you watch that rise, that favors the tenant. So it's not likely that rents are going to go up anytime soon.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So the, the next paragraph that I think we ought to all review is the, the one that says, the town's Bolt license data indicates approximately 250 businesses. Now, we, again, we scrubbed through the, the Bolt report and it's very likely that we have around 250 businesses that qualify for the criteria we just went through. It'll be a combination of small restaurant, retail, and some lodging, including property management companies that have bricks and mortar in town. And, and one of the things that dawned on me today after the coffee talk conversation is that if we do get, and I, I suspect we will get a property management company coming in to apply for this. I want to, I would want to make sure that they are not in any way short-term renting during this, this time without, you know, I think that would be cause for disqualification if not those people losing their licenses. So.
I agree, Wendy.
Yep.
And Wendy, do you, Brian?
I'm sorry.
How, do you audit those Bolt figures? I, I feel like that's almost been on your honor. And the less employees you have, the less you pay for your Bolt license. I see Dick shaking his head. I mean, I.
Yeah, I know a lot of.
Do we ever audit that?
We do not do an audit of the employee count. We do have provisions for sales tax audits for sales figures, but we do not verify employee numbers.
And that, that's probably a bridge too far and will be too cumbersome for us to do. But everybody's got to understand that when an employer puts down how many people work for them on the Bolt license, there is the opportunity to save money by not, you know, by saying, well, in May I have 15 employees. In July I have 70 employees. I should just put 15. So that, that is not, you know, that there is some, we just have to understand that going into this.
Yeah. And, 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 you know.
No, it's the only tool. So we can't do anything about it. It's the right thing to use. We cannot be surprised if somebody comes in and says, hey, why did you give so and so this money? They have at least, you know, 30 employees. We just need to know going forward that that's, that's the tool that we have. And I think it's a good tool that Gary and Wendy can, I, I don't think we have any better. So.
Yeah. And I, you know, we've looked, again, we've looked at this and there's, there's a few that you would go, really? You know, but actually I, you know, I, I think not too many, a few.
Okay.
Yeah.
And again, I think one of the important things in, in terms of the businesses that would qualify are businesses that have been closed and they can't do the work from home or from another offsite location. And I would think some property management companies or many of them would probably fall into that category, would they not?
That.
The employees could work from home and still do whatever it is they need to do. Do bookings for the summer or next year or whatever.
Yeah. I, I, yeah. I mean, again, I guess that's a, you know, you could also sell product from home. I mean, you know, how far are we going to go with that? So because they're not able to book right now, it's closed.
Yeah, right. Well, they, they can't book right now, but they can book for the, the fall.
Yeah.
Well.
Again, these are, these are the nuances that we really have to.
Right.
Get around it, what we think is fair and equitable.
And we'd, we'd want them to book for the fall and the, in the, in the summer.
Right.
That's how we're going to get some bodies in town once this is over.
But meanwhile, they're paying their rent on, you know, the, the bricks and mortar that they have in town. Yeah. I think again, you know, every application needs to have, you know, good once over and we'll, you know, we'll have to see. So, but, but we, we did say that, you know, some of the small lodging companies should be a consideration here. And that's.
Yeah, no.
Takes in.
You have to understand exactly what they're doing, how they're doing it.
Correct.
And I'm going to volunteer, I'm going to volunteer Rick Holman as the final arbiter.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah.
Okay. So the next sentence is important. The committee recommends the goal of covering one month's rent plus CAMs up to a cap of $4,000 per application. You know, it, it's, it's hard to find the sweet spot here. We, we've done some analysis on what a thousand square foot retail space is probably costing that tenant on average plus CAMs. And, and it could be anywhere from, on a thousand square feet, it could be anywhere from four to $5,000 a month. So we have many retail shops that are smaller than a thousand. We've got a couple of little tiny guys out there. And, and so we'll have some that, that can, you know, if, if we're able to provide $2,000, that will be a big deal to them. Others, you know, you know, it, $4,000 will, will be helpful, but it still won't be their whole rent payment. That'll be the case with a few. But we also thought that we've got to try to keep this universe in the beginning, at least a little bit conservative, because if we start dividing up this million dollars and we can only give people 500 bucks, it's not helping anybody.
Yeah.
So, so how do you guys feel about that?
Let me just add that keep in mind that one of our goals, I think we heard from all of us, was to try to benefit as many, as many small businesses as we can and doing it in a way that there is some, you know, monetarily, there's, it's impactful. So, you know, if we cap things at 4,000, there'll be some who need less than four, as Wendy said, some will be right around the four and some will need more than four, but they won't get it. But probably sort of the modeling that we've done, it's, we're probably going to be able to certainly address 250 and probably closer to 300 if we, if, if we settle on a, on a cap at that 4,000. And that's 300 small businesses, which, you know, seems to be, you know, a lot of people.
I think that's outstanding, Gary.
Yeah.
Does everybody agree that, you know, we, this is, this is the good framework to, to go with and to let Gary and Wendy proceed down this road?
I think it's great. Thank you.
Great.
Good work. That's really good.
Real impressive.
Can I ask one question? If the, if the small businesses rent is $2,000 per month, then is the max they could get $2,000?
Um, the, the plan for right now is yes. You know, we're going to hope, you know, again, we're, we're coming right into April. We would hope that this helps them get through April. Then we're, this, we're doing this on the fly. We'll see where we are. We'll bring the report back to council. We'll let, keep you all posted on who we're helping, how many we're helping, where we're going to be, and what does this world look like in 30 more days? You know, and then there'll maybe be some more decisions that need to be made by council.
You know, I, I think hopefully in concert with the landlords doing deferments, you know, the tenant actually gets more than the comfort factor for just, just for the month of April, that they can get.
Yeah. So that's what I was wondering is like, are we only giving them exactly what the landlord and you know, enough for exactly for them to get through April? Or will we give them the full 2,000? And then if the landlord has either forgiven some or deferred some, they can use it for April and May. That's what I'm, that's what my question.
Well, remember the check goes to the landlord. So, so this, you know, I, I would think that that probably for the most part, I think somebody would want to get this done in April. They, they'd want us to do April. We'll worry about May. You know, if the landlord comes back and, and does do some greater deal and wants to negotiate something, I think we're all ears, right, Gary? I mean, I think we'd be.
Yeah. But I think realistically, human nature, the landlord is going to say, if I can put money in my pocket today, give me April.
Yeah.
You know, as opposed to saying, well, you know, what's going to happen is we're going to see how this works. you know, what's gonna happen is, we're gonna see how this works. We're gonna see what's going on in the real world out there in terms of the COVID-19. And we want to make sure we've spread this as broadly as possible. You know, that's not to say that there won't be needs to kind of, you know, to think about some other things going down the road. But I think right now it's, let's stay with the philosophy that we are providing short-term bridge assistance and hoping that the, like the SBA program in particular and the unemployment program that's gonna put, you know, pay people what their wages were for a period of time, up to several months, that that can get rolling sooner rather than later to kind of pick up where we left off. Now, if we find that it doesn't and there's still some hurt out there, I mean, council can sit down and have that discussion again.
You know, I mean, first of, you guys have done an amazing job in such a short period of time. And I think, like all of us, I think of this not as a cost, but as an investment in our town to keep our town the same as it was before, as it will be after. So this is good work and, you know, we can micromanage this till the cows come home. But I'm pretty happy with what you guys have come up with and I think you're doing the most amount of good with the least amount of money. And then, you know, I for one would look at something down the road if we still need to. So, but first, let's shoot the, like I say, shoot the snake closest to our foot. I know I use that metaphor too much.
Yeah, get something new, Jeffrey.
Yeah, because let's face it, what we want is a town that's very eclectic, which it is now.
Yeah.
If we can't keep our businesses in place and the employees to work in those businesses in place through the FERC program, we will end up with a town full of t-shirts and t-shirts and real estate offices.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so how are we going to get this message out? Are we going to email Bolt license holders that may fit this, these qualifications or direct them to the website?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, you know, and I'm sure Haley can help, you know, do some social media notifications too. We've had a lot of people listening to the coffee talks and kind of following this program as we're working on it. So I think the word will get around quickly. But we, we're gonna be using a variation of the same software that we use for childcare scholarships, which has worked pretty well, it's pretty simple. Staff feels very confident that they can get this up and running by Monday with this approval from council. And so I do believe that we can crank right along on this program, so.
Great work, Wendy and Gary.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, and I just mentioned, we've had some terrific input from Chris Kulik and Julia Poister. You know, without their help, we wouldn't be as far along as we are. So, you know, many thanks to them and
Gary, list the other folks that are on the committee, the civilians. Give them some props.
Well, yeah, I mean, Wendy did, as we started this, I mean, Toby Babich for lodging.
Yeah.
Jeff Boyd for Peekaboo Toys for the retail and Ken Nelson for the restaurateurs.
Cool, alright, great.
And interestingly, Jeff Boyd had a conference call today with a lot of people of the Retail Association where he shared this information. We gave, we gave those three individuals a preview earlier this morning because we only finished putting this together last evening. And so we gave them a preview this morning and all three of them said, "You guys are doing incredible." There's, how many other towns would step up like this? The fact that you could be losing 12 to 15 million dollars in your general revenues this year just because who knows what's gonna happen, but yet you can turn around and put a million and a half dollars back into this community? They said that is absolutely awesome. And all three of them said, "They will, they are singing the praises of the town of record in terms of just what we're doing and stepping up."
Cool.
So before we move on from this, there was a couple comments online that Haley will forward to Gary and Wendy directly, but they're about basing local ownership on a percentage. Comments about being lenient with businesses that fill five out of the six bullets. And then a comment that we shouldn't penalize a business with a bad landlord. So we'll work through all those things as we go on. So are we good on this topic? Everybody satisfied?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. We're gonna move to budget update, right? Is that next?
Yeah.
Budget update.
Okay. Excuse me. What we've sent out to the group today is an update of the memo we put out last week, which showed where our fund balances are. And then we go through the, we go through the exercise of looking at our reserves and seeing what our net fund balance is based on what we have on the bank now and what our near-term spending plans are. Memo shows that we've been doing some work on updating the near-term spending plan. The first section of the memo talks about the five-year CIP. And Shannon Smith is on the meeting as well to answer any specific questions you might have. But that first exhibit, the five-year CIP, is what we went through with Rick Holman, Shannon Smith, and myself and Shannon Haynes, and we moved projects around. Some were changed in scope, some were eliminated, some were pushed back a couple of years. And by doing that exercise, we were able to free up over 5 million, over 5.5 million dollars in funding. And as council will recall, those funds are freed up because as we move capital projects further out, they are no longer considered near-term spending plans and they fall out of our reserves. So again, Shannon is here to answer your questions about specific projects. All the projects that have been moved are highlighted in yellow and there is a short explanatory note off to the right. So I'll pause here and see if council has any questions about specific projects being moved, changes to the scope of the projects or things of that nature.
Go ahead, Rick. So let's quickly go down through the CIP. There are a couple notes I wanted to make. You may wonder why there are some items that are still on there and why we didn't move everything up. There are some things that need to be done and there are some things that we think should be done with finishing up some design. In case there's any federal stimulus dollars looking for shovel-ready projects, we need to have designs ready to go if we want to be able to put in for any of that grant money down the road. So we'll point those things out to you. We're gonna strongly suggest to you that we continue with the River Park project because we only have to contribute, we had 700,000 in there because we were gonna do 350 and we had 350 coming from GOCO. We could put in just 140,000 and meet our match requirement with GOCO and get this project pretty much done and use our $350,000 GOCO money. So we think, you know, we should, you know, put, it was gonna be 105,000 from Open Space, so we think let's use 140 from Open Space and add it to that 350 GOCO and we can do, you know, 80, 75, 80% completion on this project and have it done. So you all good with that?
Yeah.
Alright. Shannon, the 200 on the school parcel is for some design work on the roadway, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's trying to be shovel-ready, so that's why we have that in there.
But otherwise, the school is cool with an updated timeline?
Well, I've reached, we pushed everything out and I've reached out to the school, but they're extremely, I mean, they're still doing some programs and I haven't heard back. But it's, you know, I've told them that we're gonna need to push our things out beyond the three-year window, probably more of a five-year window. So that we could either, you know, do a friendly amendment to our IGA that we have with them or we have to fall back on the appropriation clause in there. So I'm sure it won't be an issue. Well, we have a great relationship and work with the school, so. But right now, I think this is where we need to go on any of the school property stuff. Push it out. And you'll see in the Coin Valley and the Blue River stuff, we're, again, we're pushing that out next year because again, we'll, you know, we'll assess that project next year along with any other improvements we do along the river. And we did put the rehabilitation of the river in there, so that was not in your CIP before. So that's showing up in that three-year reserve window also.
I'd like to note that we are counting on a 30% of that river project from Open Space as well. Or 33%, one-third.
Shannon, the portion of the roadway resurfacing that got moved, the concrete piece, how critical is that?
I don't think it's critical. I mean, it's important to do because we do have some pretty damaged concrete, but we were cutting down to the bone here. If you want to add it back in, we absolutely can.
I am of the opinion that government still needs to do what government's supposed to do and that is keep the, you know, keep the roads paved, keep the concrete safe for people to walk on, keep the streets plowed, et cetera. So that's one that I don't have a problem fulfilling. The 285, that, putting that 285 back in, I don't know how everybody else feels.
No, I think that's appropriate.
And I agree, Eric, because it also will likely go to local contractors, which is a big deal.
Yeah.
Especially if it goes to local, yeah.
So we're gonna move the 285 back in with the 565. Alright?
Yep.
Got it.
We skipped
Looks fantastic.
We skipped over fiber. Just to, just explain what the thing, what we're gonna be doing on fiber then?
Well, I mean, fiber is still in there, just like the parking structure and we're gonna have to, you know, we have reduced that down $3 million because of the Weishorn neighborhood coming out of it.
That's what I wanted to understand, it was the Weishorn piece we're pulling out, okay.
Yeah.
I'm good with that. Yep.
And then you can see where the dollars are coming back in down there. That's pretty self-explanatory. The only two projects that are, that are still on there in parking and transportation is the Watson Roundabout and we think it's important to have that design ready. So we're suggesting we continue with that design. And then the $100,000 on the corridor lighting, most of that money's already been spent, product's been ordered. So there's no, we can't really get rid of that now.
Hey Gary, as we start to go for the COP, what would be your threshold? If municipal bonds really are not that attractive right now for investors, what would be your threshold interest rate where we would say, "We need to wait"?
I don't know that I'd have an answer to that at the moment.
Okay.
I guess it'd be all part of trying to understand, A, where the rates are today, what were they, what were they when we thought we would go? And I'd just like to kind of get a sense of what, you know, what that debt service would look like.
Okay.
That's something, you know, Brian, Brian can chat with us on.
We can adjust that kind of number all the way up to the day of the sale. I was there when they did the 2016 COPs, so, I mean, they'll look at you and say, "Here's what's happening today. Do you want to move or do it later?" So once, like you said, once we've done the legwork, we can always delay it. So we'll be in position to do it, but, you know, interest rates are zero. But as we've discussed with council, the attractiveness of municipal bonds, small town, especially a small ski town, it's not, for obvious reasons, the best sell right now.
And I think the tight, I think the spreads are tight between taxable and non-taxable right now. So when we finally launch, what will it be? Will it be a taxable or a non-taxable issue?
So we're gonna, we're doing a conference call tomorrow with the underwriter and the bond attorney to discuss whether we wanna so if we, if we put up collateral, meaning other town assets, as our collateral for these projects, with the parking structure using other collateral, we can become tax exempt. So it will encumber, you know, quite a bit of our town assets. Certainly our high-dollar ones, that's for sure. Probably four or five properties combined, but that may be okay because it's the better deal for us. So.
And we definitely have a larger discussion to have about the optics of building the parking structure as well as, you know, some other things going on. So we will have that in the coming, the coming weeks, I think.
Okay.
But we do have to make a decision fairly soon on, as they start to do all the paperwork, they have to know what collateral we're using. And so that's why we're gonna discuss that tomorrow. That has nothing to do with our decision to move forward and all that. It's a logistical deal that we have to decide, so.
Alright, is everybody good on the CIP? What else you got, Rick?
I got one quick question and this is kind of picky when it comes to the CIP. But what about, are we gonna have a discussion down the road about some of the cutbacks that we might do? Like I'm thinking of landscaping the flowers on Highway 9 north of town. Is that something that, that's not necessary to talk about right now, but we'll visit that later on?
Well, what are you gonna talk about next are the cuts that we've currently made in our current budget.
Okay. So that was, you had to bring that up.
And those are gonna get you to a much more comfortable number as we go further.
Yeah.
And we start to fine-tune and understand a little more how long this could be going on, get a clearer picture of what our, our resources may be and our revenues. Then we have to start looking at what we'll call kind of a tier-two level, which we have to go deeper into the budgets and start making additional cuts. And that's where we start talking more about things that are gonna impact the look of the town and the potential service delivery.
Okay.
And Rick, I have a general question. So do we know, with all of, all of the things that we're trying to do, how it compares to 2008 and what we did then with the recession? Are we on par? Are we doing everything that was done then? Are we doing more? Are we doing less? What's the, how does it compare?
I think we're doing everything that we did then. We went in and we froze salaries, we froze positions that were in critical positions. And, you know, then we looked at our budgets, you know, and you you know, if you can go in there and come up with $4 million out of a, you know, $30 million general fund budget, you said, "Well, why did, is there, is there just that much fluff in the budget?" Of course not, but when you start freezing positions, you, you know, personnel adds up to, you know, almost half of our costs or in the general fund and a little more than half, actually. And so those add up quick. And plus, it makes, the people that are here are gonna work harder. If you've only got five people in your human resources department and we're freezing a vacancy in there, that means four people are now doing the work that were done by five last year. So those are the same things that we did in 2008. The numbers are different now because your budget has grown considerably since 2008, especially transit, so.
And we froze construction the same way that we're doing now?
Yeah, and I'll remind you that the conversations that we've had recently is that when we look back at 2008, we, you know, this is not the same as 2008. So it's a different crisis, but we also have said, you know, maybe it's more appropriate to do more stuff during these lean times. But I think we have to understand what that's gonna mean for us. That's the difference right now. We don't know, we don't know what this means.
Right, right.
The slow-moving target in the recession.
The recession was different too because we really expected the worst. And in the end, our net sales tax wasn't really that far off what we were used to at the time.
A rep dropped.
Rep dropped, but you know, at the time, we weren't really relying on rep for much. We did some other things during that time. I was on council then. We did some other things during that time that I wouldn't do now, like we pulled out a bunch of streetlights in order to save money on electricity. I wouldn't do that again. I, I really feel that that was a mistake. If we, if we think that our charge is to make sure that, you know, the streets are taken care of and the sidewalks are lit for our community, I think those are the last things that we get rid of. You know, maybe we do some stuff around the edges with snow storage and, you know, shoveling the greens of the golf shoveling the greens of the golf course right now, but some of those main governmental services that we provide, I don't think we can let slip.
Well, we also cut back dramatically on transit in 2008. And for example, there was no bus service in Warriors Mark, and that was a big issue. And, and I would not want to, in this climate with how we're getting people more used to using transit, that would be such a step backwards. So, you know, I mean, we'll see how bad this gets, but I just wouldn't want to see us go there either.
Rick does have some ideas about how to trim some of that back. Or James actually had some ideas, how to trim some of that back going forward for the summertime and try to push more, you know, walking and bike riding.
So let's, let's turn to that page that, Brian, what's it titled on that thing?
It's the second paragraph, and it describes the program cost reductions. And that's the second table that is attached to the memo.
This one that is super easy to read?
You like that? I can make it smaller.
It's playing class.
No, that's the wrong one.
That's the second table.
Oh, that's, you, hey, you have a big copy.
He does.
Is it? Okay.
So it's the one that has the adopted 2020 budget at the, at the reduction and the revised. And I'm not going to go through every line on here. What I'm trying, what I want to do generally is show you, in the general fund up there, you see your different departments, and you see what their approved budget was in 2020, the amount that they have reduced that budget. And so then that's the revised number over there. So I mean, you're at almost $2 million right there, which I really applaud them on the first round of going through. And there's some notes over there of what some of those cuts add up to. And I'll tell you, this is not all apples to apples, because you, you're going to see some really big numbers coming out of recreation. At the same time, one of the things you're not seeing in this particular report is the loss of revenue in the general fund. So the majority of our revenue comes through excise, right, sales tax? But we do have, typically, we have what, $2.5 to $3 million of general fund revenue? Or a little more, because that was property tax too, right? But, yeah, so Brian, do you know what our general fund revenue is?
General fund revenue is about $9 million when you count rec, planning, and, and property tax. So the fee revenue is like six, seven, nine bucks.
So you're going to have considerable loss of revenue. I don't know off the top of my head what it is, but, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars out of recreation, because, you know, they're not selling walk-in passes during the peak part of the year like they normally do. And so a lot of their programs aren't bringing money in, et cetera. So while they're cutting some big expenses, you know, that, how it comes out in the end is probably only really a hundred or $200,000 difference. But anyways, it's still a good job of getting that down. And then you'll see golf, pretty self-explanatory. The marketing money is what, the 476 is what we're getting back or what we will not be paying. Obviously, we're reducing the money that we paid BTO this year. That money, though, will be, will stay in the marketing fund reserve. And where that will help you is next year, when you have, you know, based off of your 2020 revenues, you're going to have a smaller percentage that goes into the marketing fund. So that money will be there to help you in 2021, when you actually have less reserve and you want to get them back to their normal spending limits. So it'll, it'll be good in that regard. Open space is also one of those ones that are, where they're freezing a position and not hiring, you know, a naturalist, and they were, instead of two, they're going to have one. And Jeffrey went through some of those things the other Tuesday that they're looking at. They've done an excellent job, I think. And, you know, in 2020, they were actually trying to take a step forward and kind of beef up some of their programs and things that they've been doing and actually get some additional coordinator help in there and things like that. So all of that stuff has kind of been frozen and gone away, which allowed them to return quite a bit of money back. I mean, you know, they're going to, they're estimating, in their revenue loss also, that same percentage of, of sales tax that we're looking at townwide. So they're going to have significantly less revenue in that fund. Garage and IT are our internal service funds, and primarily when we return money back into those, that just means there are purchases that we probably would have been making that we won't be making in 2020. So that's where that money comes from. The other special projects are BRK Create, which is 10% of their, of the money that we give them, that they're cutting back and giving back to us. PHA is, that's pretty much Milne, right? That's the capital that was going to take care of Milne, plus some additional dollars from some previous capital projects that they were rolling over, that they're actually returning to us, and they'll have to reapply for those in the future. So that's a significant amount of money coming back in. So when you get to the big dollars there in transit ops, James is looking at starting the summer season, whenever we do start back up. If that's, you know, into April, if we can get our transit rolling out there again. He wants to go into the summer season with 25 of our full-time drivers, which is good. And he only wants, he's going to reduce some of the routes. So he only wants to start with one purple route, the Purple A. And he only wants to start with one trolley. And he would, every, every, all the other routes would still have 30-minute service. So he would be running five buses, I believe, is what he told me. And we have significantly less ridership, obviously, in the summer, because people ride their bikes and do other modes of transportation. So, you know, 70% of our ridership comes during the six months of the winter operation. The other 30% comes in the summer operation. It doesn't mean it's still not important. What James would like to do is start with these reduced routes. If we need to ramp it back up, if it feels like we're getting busier, things are normal as we get to July, you know, we can work on adding some stuff back in. Everything we add back in will obviously decrease the amount of savings we see. But I, I would suggest that that's how we start that summer season.
If summer becomes strong, we can always add stuff in. Yeah, I would like to talk to James about doing some alternating on the purple. Run some routes A or some routes B, since we already have the stops there, so. But I'll, I'll reach out to James and see if that's something that's, that's doable or not. And I'm sure he's listening. James?
I think it's just important that we have enough drivers, that it's really consistent. People can plan on the bus coming when it's supposed to be there. Because I feel like as long as we have that consistency, then people will continue to maintain that alternative transportation. Whereas, you know, if we don't have enough drivers, then that's, the consistency is an issue with people wanting to use it.
Yeah, well, I think James is very comfortable with that 25-driver number. And, you know, when we start running full routes and we fluctuate, if we're down a couple positions, that's where things start to get, makes them nervous sometimes, right? Especially knowing that some of our, it's not a direct rollover. There's this gap between our seasons a little bit this year, makes it a little problematic. So I think it's a good thing to start a little slow and ramp it up if we need to.
Yeah.
So you look at that, once you plug in that merit freeze this year, then we're at $6 million. But it's important that, I think you all remember, that that bottom number, the 4.7, that's what, that's the savings in our service fund. Those are those excise funds and general funds that you have control over. You know, the 1.3 million of that is open space, you know, golf, marketing, those types of funds that you have little discretion in, because those monies need to stay within those. They're basically enterprise, but marketing's not an enterprise, but they have some discretion in marketing, right, Brian?
Just give you the thumbs up.
Good. Anything to add, Brian, on this sheet that I missed?
Nope, my guy covers it.
How do you feel about the direction we've gone here? I think this is a really good job for the first go-around of this thing.
This is amazing. I just want to make sure that none of this money came from actually cutting positions or cutting salaries.
But of course, we, we, if you're asking, did we lay anybody off, the answer is no. But of course, we cut positions, because when you freeze a position, you're basically cutting a position out. It doesn't mean, by freezing it, we're not eliminating it in perpetuity. We're just freezing it indefinitely until we feel like it's time to put it back.
Right, I just meant we didn't lay anyone off. You're right, that's what I meant.
Okay, no, we did not.
I appreciate the staff's work on this. This is, this is impressive.
Well, thank you. I, I'm very proud of the work they did too, especially in just a short few days and getting in there. Most of them are used to it because they still remember the Purple A, when we did the same excise. So I'm going to let Brian talk about how that translates over to that fund balance report, what we've done so far, which is your last chart.
Yes, on the last page of the memo, you have the reserves analysis, which I think we're fairly familiar with now. In that left column, we have our new projected end-of-2020 fund balances, based on where we started with the budget. And then we're taking out our reductions to revenue, our assumptions for the downturns in the economy. We've also taken out, there was a large purchase that was planned on a general fund that has been delayed or mothballed, so that added some money back into general fund. And after you do all that, that is where we land in terms of the $39 million fund balance projected for 12/31/20, for the end of this year. You'll see in there some of the things we've just been talking about, the reduced capital, also revenue impacts to the excise fund. I changed our assumption going forward from June through December, and I changed it to about a 40% reduction in revenue. There's been a lot of discussion going around between finance departments, finance directors in the state. And I think, you know, the 25% reduction we had was too rosy. I really feel like to be in line with what other people are thinking, and when you really see the direction this thing is going, 40% seems a little more what we should be planning for. So that results in that lower revenue number in the excise fund. So those are the things that pushed our fund balances down. And then as we go across the columns, the big change here is in the excise fund. If you go across and you look under council policy, that's your CIP reserve. And that is what has gone down so much from the last time we looked at this, because of the work we did on the CIP, the document we looked at first. There aren't really any other big changes to the reserves. You still have your $9 million of capital debt reserve under council policy. And that's in anticipation of the borrowing for fiber and the parking garage. Then in the far right, you'll see under net balance, after we take all those council and required reserves out of there, we're negative 350 grand. So that is a much more comfortable place to be than we were last time. It's still a very conservative exercise in terms of, again, it's important to note, we don't have negative 300 grand in the bank right now. This is looking at our next three years out, '21, '22, '23 for CIP, and showing, okay, if things don't change, we're going to have to make some more decisions down the road. But for right now, you know, a big number to look at is that, that $39 million number. That's what we're projecting to have in the bank at the end, and that's what we'll have to make decisions with. You know, everything's subject to change, of course. But really, the, the big thing here that changed your outlook was all that work that was done on the CIP, moving it out. It does not anticipate any other major cuts yet.
Another important thing to note, that the, I just told you, there's a $4.7 million savings in that, those service fund, excise fund items and all that, that is not in this chart. So if you go through, the reality is, you know, you're more like 4.5 million to the good instead of 3 million, 300,000 in the red. Because once you plug in all of those savings that we're talking about, your general fund balance, your excise fund balance are all going to increase at the end of the year. But Brian, Brian wanted you to see apples-to-apples difference between what you saw last time with, you know, your capital projects and where you were like, was it 12 or 13 million in the hole? To where you've gotten now. And then once you plug in that $4.7 million savings that we're now going to experience most of that, right? In 2020, then you're going to be that much farther ahead.
Is this kind of like a good cop, bad cop scenario?
Pretty much. I can't tell who's who, though. Yeah, another important thing for the people that are watching today, that there's $26 million that's council policy that's showing as a negative, that's money that the council sets aside. That's not money that's being spent. That is just, that's what we set aside to cover things that we've decided we're going to do. So this is really much more conservative than it even, than it even looks like on paper. So if you, if you were to look at this and wonder what we're spending $26 million on, it's really, we're not. It's there to cover things if things really, really go in the tank, even more than they are today, so.
Can I just clarify one other thing? Because there was a question on there that I, I saw on somebody who was watching that thought we had several police officer positions and that we shouldn't be freezing all of our police officer positions. They are right, that we currently have three vacant police officer positions, plus we have a couple people in training. Out of those three vacant positions, I am letting them fill two of those, and we're only freezing one police officer position. Because we do know that this is a struggle to keep, it takes six months to get those people trained, almost a year then to go through their field training. It's, if we let that, if we freeze too many of those, it puts us in a bad situation. And so they've only, they're only freezing one vacancy. I think we froze two in 2008.
Kudos.
Budget.
Staff did. Incredible work by the staff.
Yes, agreed. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. It gives you a little better feeling, I think, of where we're at, obviously, as we progress and we start to monitor revenues, we're going to, it's going to move the needle one way or the other. And, but, you know, we don't know, and only time's going to tell on this. But at least we've done this exercise to make us feel a little more comfortable for the time being. Plus, it lets us get some, engage, let some people know that we won't be doing work, and it lets us start to fill some contracts with some local contractors so they can start getting out there probably as soon as, you know, as April is next month. Because some of the work that needs to get done is considered construction on critical infrastructure like railways, concrete, those kinds of, that kind of work can be done now, even under the current stay-at-home order, so.
All right. Anything else? No new business? Anybody have any other matters?
Yeah, I get, I have one. Early on, before we were actually recording, or before we, before the gavel hit the, hit the table, I mentioned that the Forest Service closed campgrounds and picnic sites in many trailheads across the state. And I sent you guys, I forwarded you guys all the email. But if anyone would like to learn more about this, it is, the, the link is And it's a little bit, gives you a little bit more clarity about what the Forest Service, as well as Colorado Parks and Wildlife are doing too, so.
And I, I did reach out to Dan Gibbs, Jeffrey. DNR is not planning on closing any trails. His basic message is, if you're sick, stay home.
His basic message is if you're sick, stay home.
Yeah.
Keep your social distancing, avoid high-risk activities in remote areas. That's an important one. So you don't overburden the, the first responders. Stay regional. Front-range residents should avoid traveling to the high country. And that's coming directly from the Department of National Resources in the state of Colorado through Dan Gibbs.
Okay.
And then avoid times and places of high use. He is coordinating with the Forest Service, the BLM, National Park and Fish and Wildlife. So hopefully Dan will have some understanding about these things. There was an interesting article today, if any of you read the Colorado Sun, you can go on. There's an interesting article about telling people not to use the trails and making them locals only and how it might not be legal to do that, but it's the right thing to do. So it was a really interesting article.
Cool.
Um, he had a thing, a couple of people asked about the $500,000 that we're pushing out to FERC beginning, beginning Monday for rent relief for Breckenridge employees. And that will launch on Monday through FERC. So for more information about that, that'll be on the Town of Breckenridge website. Of course, for anybody watching, as usual, please go to www.townofbreckenridge.com for all your COVID-related news and Town of Breck news. And for any questions directly to the council, it's mayor@townofbreckenridge.com.
So we're not, I'm not going to schedule unless you want to, another special meeting for a while. I'd like to kind of play it by ear and see what comes up. We've got a lot of things to focus on. We're trying to get this grant program up and running quickly. And so I'd like to just, you know, it'd be kind of nice if things would just coast a little bit for a few days here. We've got things to work on and I'm not sure how many more orders or closures we can do. If you get rid of, yeah, anymore. So you know, if something comes up and we need to discuss something or we need to get together, we'll reach out to you. We'll try to honor this late afternoon, four o'clock time. I think it works good for the majority of you. And so certainly get ahold of us if you have questions. And you know, we'll continue to communicate during this time because there, a lot of people want to know those things. And Eric's going to continue to do his little updates within the community. And we're going to try to see the, check on the feasibility next week of pulling together some sort of mayor talk with landlords if we can identify, you know, enough of them to try to organize a virtual meeting. So that'll be kind of our next thing, the outreach that we may be looking at. So.
And just one, one last thing. I was on a conference call with Senator Bennett, Senator Gardner and Governor Polis right before our meeting started. They were talking about the relief money that's coming from the feds at $2 trillion. One of the, one of the things that we've been worried about as the Town of Breck is the money's going to the state unless you're in a county with 500,000 or more people and then you get to use the money as you'd like. There's very few counties in Colorado that have 500,000 people. So Senator Bennett and Gardner are very concerned about that language. But they were promising that they would push that out to the smaller communities. Anyway, Polis is, you know, I think he's a real friend of ours. So hopefully we'll get some of that, that money down to us for some of the things we're, we're doing and some of the things that our constituents, constituencies going through right now. So we are staying on top of that also.
Hey Eric, one, one more thing in this meeting, in the, uh, meeting we had this morning, you mentioned building hope if, if folks were feeling on edge. And you know, I think, I think that bears repeating. If, if this is, this is a rough time for everybody. If, if you're feeling, you're feeling tentatively having a grasp on your, on your calmness, building hope is a great resource.
Thanks for that, Jeffrey. Wendy?
Yeah, um, you know, not maybe for discussion in this meeting, but just to put it on everyone's radar screen that we've heard we have suspended paid parking in town for the time being. And hearing a number of folks think that, you know, that would be one thing the town should continue to do once we open the doors to get back into business. But I think we need to set expectations appropriately. I, you know, I think it's, we, we've got to remind everyone that the reason that paid parking was a necessity in our town was to allow our guests, our visitors to have some of the prime parking places along Main Street so that it could serve our businesses well. And, and we don't want to regress in, in, I think, that whole philosophy. It was difficult to go through it the, the first time and change behavior. And I, you know, I for one would hope that we don't slide backwards and have to go through that again at some point. So again, not something that has to necessarily be taken care of now, but at some point, we've got to get that on the list of things that will need to be addressed.
Absolutely. Thank you, Wendy.
Economic stimulus is not letting all the employees have the best parking again.
Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so there's some, when Polis, I believe, did his last press conference, he mentioned something about the state recommending that those, that people freeze their plastic bag fees. And I know you guys talked about it with Jesse on Tuesday and there wasn't any great desire to push it. But then some confusion came out thinking that the state was, was going to, through their order, they were going to suspend plastic bag fees. And when I was in City Market at seven o'clock this morning, they had notes on the, on the checkout stands that said that they're not charging you for plastic bags. But I think the notes are gone now. And then we mentioned this morning that we thought the state had suspended plastic bag fees. So we've created a little bit of confusion out there. We, Tim can do, if you want, we, by, you know, the order like we did on the sign code, we could temporarily suspend plastic bag fees during this crisis if we want to do that.
Why would, why would we do that?
Only because we created a little confusion. Some people think now they are suspended because we said it this morning. I think City Market had put out something and it appears like they might have taken it back again, thinking that they were suspended. So that's the only reason.
Okay.
Do you guys, can you wash these multi-use bags?
Yes, you know, Jesse said you could even do a video on how to clean them and all that stuff. But I'm not sure, I didn't have a chance to reach out. I don't know if anybody else is locally here considering Frisco's the only one that has it, right? So.
I, I would be okay for just, as long as we're in this pandemic, to freeze the, the tax on, or the fee, sorry, sorry, the fee on plastic bags. Just if, if people feel like it's safer. I feel like now that we're mainly, hopefully locals here, I think people who use reusable bags will continue to use reusable bags. And if people feel like it's safer, I don't feel comfortable charging a fee for that right now.
How's everybody else feel?
Fine.
Yeah, I'm okay, I'm okay with that, but I will want to warn us, it will be like the whole, Wendy mentioned about parking. When you go back, it's going to be, it will be all over again as far as the outrage. But yeah, I, I, I agree. And I, I think what Erin said is true. I think people that use them regularly will continue to use them. And it might just be a little bit of a relief for people who are going through the stress of this really trying time. And, and so yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it temporarily.
Temporarily, yeah.
I'm okay with it temporarily.
I'm okay with it. I would like there to be a messaging that it, we're perfectly fine with people bringing their own bags still. Because I feel like this, if the state's saying, you know, don't use them because they might spread COVID, but we all don't believe that, then I think it'd be great if we could message, it's perfectly fine to use your own bags. You don't have to use.
Can you put the bag in the washing machine? You guys know that?
I would suggest nobody use Jeffrey's bags.
They've obviously never been washed.
So you can put them in the washing machine?
Yeah, give it a try. Let us know.
So Tim will draft an order. I'll sign it tomorrow and then we'll have Haley communicate that out. And we'll get with, really just City Market probably the only one that we got to worry about and the other grocery store, local or whatever.
Anything else, gang?
No.
All right, I want to thank, of course, the council for being here and thank all the people that came to watch today. It's great to have such amazing community engagement during this, during this time. So thank you all. Stay safe, wash your hands and keep your group small. Jern?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.